County Board of Supervisors to order.
I call the Lancaster County School Board to order, and we do have Cindy's coming.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Keith will not be here this evening. She's sick from her second shot.
Okay, School Board, take it over.
Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
So, wanted to present to you tonight what you have in front of you. Do each of you have a handout?
Yes.
So, again, it's by law, we're required to present a budget, and it is a budget. It's not an exact science, but we're required to do a budget. And it's a process. It's our target. I call it our cap for what we can spend without Whitney and I getting in trouble. Some of the highlights of this, we do expect our ADM to remain flat. Fortunately, we didn't see a huge loss from our enrollment at the end of the year to what we're currently seeing, which is good news, with the exception of, we have fewer preschool students this year. I don't think parents just opted to put their children in there. Our local composite index is still the same. We do realize with the increased need for, oh, I need to get closer.
I think you're coming through a little bit.
Okay, sorry.
You might can take the mask down if you want to speak.
You guys mind? Thank you.
Yeah, bothers me a lot.
Increased need for student supports under the COVID impact. The operating mode is still unknown, but I will say, we have presented a budget here or to you, or presenting to you one that would be fully open. I do know there is gonna, I think, from the General Assembly, require virtual as an option for at least one more year, but require also in person. That's in the, that's currently in the House right now. But we are presenting to you something to remain fully open. We are, in this budget, recommending a salary increase 3% for all. That includes teachers at 1.5 increase, plus a 1.5 step, and 3% for all others. This will take our starting teacher salary to forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four. We have a target for fiscal year 2026 to be at forty-five thousand. We do plan to use some of our regional carryover to help balance some of this, and this does include a mass specialist position for next year, because we do realize that virtual learning is not for every kid, and we're gonna have some deficiencies to make up. I'm sorry, I'm still probably not talking close enough into this. What you see before you is, and I'm probably gonna mess this up again, because this does look like a different number than what. The overall increase and decrease is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars from last year, a 1.19% increase.
Yeah, it's one eighty-eight, four thirty, I believe.
Yes. And what we're asking from, from the local funds this year is thirty-six thousand, forty-seven dollars. We are seeing some more federal funds, which offset some of our requests and some of our ask. And if you look at the little chart, it actually shows you, getting older, and my eyes are worse, but I think it's 69% of our funds are spent for instruction. And as you all know, the majority of our budget is spent on salaries, so. And I think that would actually summarize what our requests are. Are there questions that I can answer?
Okay. Fellow board members, you have any questions? Okay, Superintendent, you look like you did an excellent job here. You satisfied, I believe, all of us.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I'd just like to say, I'd like, again, like the continued good working relationships that we've developed over the years with the board, the two boards. I think we're miles away from where we were just a few years ago, and so it's been a refreshing experience to have these kind of meetings and be able to talk openly and frank about real things and real things that affect the taxpayers and the students of Lancaster County. So, thank you all for the continued effort on that part.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that.
And you listen to our concerns and really consider and try to work with us on that. We appreciate that, too.
I agree with what Mr. Bella said, because I was thinking as I was driving up here, we are far cry from what we were, I guess, eight years ago, somewhere like that, eight years ago, with the relationship. So, it's refreshing.
It is very refreshing on our end, too. It's a wonderful relationship. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you and the support we have with you and the open conversations and the frankness. It certainly lends itself to working better together, so. Just wanted to say, I appreciate you and your support. And if there are no further questions.
Jack, did you have any questions?
No.
Kinda looked much different from when we thought a month ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, this is it.
That's gonna be the shortest meeting in history.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, I move that we close this meeting.
You adjourn till 7:00 PM?
Right. Yep, close this meeting, adjourn until 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned until 7:00.
I have nothing planned for y'all now.
You didn't order a pizza?
Actually, they are, too.
The school board, it's adjourned.
I need to put my mask back on. How are you, sir? Good, thank you. Thank you.
I sent you a text. I'm on my way.
I thought, I got it. I was like, I'm.
Yep, thank you.
I was with a customer. I was like, pass me by. She's like, excuse me. And out the door.
It ends up being fifty-four gallons of nitrogen per year, per acre. And based on the analysis I used in the example of thirty-two percent nitrogen, that would end up being about a hundred ninety-two pounds of nitrogen per year. Virginia Tech's nutrient removal that it claims that the crop removes during the year is a hundred and fifty pounds. So you can see the bulk of that gets removed by the crop. So, and then you go down the phosphate, you can see those numbers came out to a hundred pounds per acre. And the potash came out to a hundred, and you can see what the chemicals were. We mainly wanted you to see that those numbers are not that far out of line with what the recommendations are. They're a little high, but when you look at the, the per number acres there, you have to really take it in perspective on, on the acreage size. We do a lot of best management practices in farming. We do nutrient management plans, we do soil sampling, and we do cover crops which help to manage those nutrients. So just wanted to bring that information to your attention. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to discuss it, so would extension or soil and water. And I thank you for your time this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone in the Zoom audience that wants to speak during the public input session? If so, raise your hand. Okay, so evidently we don't have anyone there. Any additional people in the audience here? Okay, if not, public input session is closed. Alright, let's move over. We don't have any old business this time. So, Virginia Department of Transportation.
I don't need five minutes.
No, you're good.
I guess y'all have got David's report. Just a couple of other things that have come up since that was submitted. Weather permitting, we're gonna try to start cleanup Monday, but weatherman isn't sounding too good, and I don't wanna mess his shoulders up any more than we can, so just bear with us on that. I got, I did get approval to get a ditching head for our boom more, so I'm hoping that's gonna help us with some of this drainage, just getting leaves and stuff out. I don't know when that's coming, but I did get approval for that. And we had our first snowstorm, and I mean, it's kinda been going off for a while, but we did get enough to really call everybody out. I think all in all, we had a pretty good plan, everything seemed to go well. And that's all I have. Do y'all have anything for me?
One thing.
Sir, first of all, I was impressed by the way you got things taken care of, you know, to get traffic flowing again up in this end of the county, because I was very surprised to see how many trees were down, so. Good luck on that, and I know you've got quite a job cleaning it up. When I look at your pavement schedule here, I'm not sure what each of these means. You've got cake seal and surface treatment. I'm not sure what is happening with each one, but what, the point I wanted to get to is that I noticed, for example, on surface treatment, if I, it's what I think it is, Coke Colony Road down in my district needs some attention. It's actually breaking up, you know, it's, it's chip and tar.
Right.
But there's a section of it that's been, had, you know, this, this asphalt put over, you know, the patching type thing, the whole thing is breaking up. And so, and additionally, we've got some potholes which I'm sure you'll get to. But I know you've got a lot on your plate, but I wanna bring that to your attention so we can at least get on your schedule here, because I didn't see it.
Yes, so today, we got a call, and so how the pavement schedule works is we'll evaluate, you know, roads now and kinda, you know, everything is gonna be driven by the budget. So, you know, we get X number of dollars and we kinda have to make it fit. So, we try to pick the most need, but yet try not to go all over the county. You know, just try to work in sections where it's, they don't have to do a whole lot of transit and all, but um.
I just bring it up because with all this rain, it's gotten worse, and the old saying, you know, it's ditching times saves nine type of deal, because if it gets much worse, like I say, there's gonna be chunks coming out.
And we do have two pothole trucks now. So basically, you know, we're in five counties, so we only get them every five weeks. And they have requested another truck, so, you know, we'll get them every three weeks or so. And there are quite a few potholes now, but, and we have them next week. But unfortunately, every time I get to a pothole truck, it rains for three days to five. But that is, and it works also.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else with Mr. Bryant?
I have a couple of things. As, as we know, littering has been a continual problem. I know over the winter, there's no pickups. I think in the past, you said VDOT does two full cleanups a year. Did you, you mentioned the cost of that before, I believe. What was the cost of one of those entire countywide cleanups?
I'm, I really, I'd have to get back to you on that, I can't, I don't know right this second.
It was fairly extensive.
And I'm, I'm assuming the contractor will probably mow the first cycle, which will be before July, and when they do it, they pick up all the litter.
And that usually happens twice a year?
Yes, usually in the spring and then fall.
If we wanted to up that to another two times a year or something, could we partner with you and help make that happen with a cost?
I would have to talk to David and, and get back with you.
Because we're not having any, any success of combating this problem through fines or, or court costs, so at some point, we just need to start solving the problem and paying for the problem to be solved. And if people start realizing that it's costing them money and it's costing them through their taxes, and they see that keep going up, maybe they'll get the intention to stop littering and, and then we can start dialing that back. But I don't see any other way that we're gonna solve this problem besides tacking it head-on and, and bearing a cost to make it happen.
I don't know how hard it is to secure a trash bag in the back of a truck, but it just seems like they just blow a, wipe the rock.
I don't know either, or how hard is it to turn around and go get it, but at some point, it's, it's, it's a mess and we're not making any success in our, in our combating it through the legal means. So, I think we need to start looking at other avenues to solve it and clean it up, because it's just unsightly and it's not acceptable.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to David about that and get with Don, so I can report back to you.
Okay. On Laura Road, near the section where the Mahuns run bridges, going downhill?
The shoulders?
Yeah, they, they caving in, yeah, so.
Unfortunately, for the last three weeks, I think all we've done is snow removal and cleanup, and then, you know, getting it dirty again, so hopefully the weather's gonna break here soon and we can get on top of all this stuff.
Yeah, the sides, because the water washing down washes it out, and then the cars run over and it breaks right up and falls down, yeah. Okay, that's, that's it, anyone?
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Alright. Presentation from broadband authority, Mr. Silverman, Dr. Silverman?
Good evening. I'll highlight a couple of things on here, and then you can jump in with questions. The two key ones, I believe, are the outstanding grants, which we have not heard any finality on. First one, reconnect, you know, it was resubmitted last period and reported on that one. We did find out the decision will be made mid-March, and we're in the running. The other one was the VATTI proposal, which is a state grant. That was resubmitted. Unfortunately, because of the overlap with Artoff also with that grant, we lost about three hundred homes out of Region Three, which is essentially Eastern Caratomen as one boundary going up Good Luck Road, everything south and east. So the idea of this VATTI grant was to, what we call the Swiss cheese, to get the holes in there, which was due to looking at the current person, Atlantic Broadband, looking for higher density areas. And so we left three homes here, five homes there, ten homes. So that's what we're trying to resolve with that grant. And when we're gonna hear back, we don't know. Again, we hope it's quick. The other stuff is, you know, you, you can read it and go through it. One thing I do wanna put up here, we won a, actually, we won two Virginia Broadband Cares Act funding. So it's different than the Cares Act that the county received, a separate one. And I wanted to make sure that everybody knew. Both of these grants total about five hundred thousand, a little shy of that number. But the, one of the projects is near completion right now, which is the, what we call the SMARTPoles. These are basically standalone poles. We published on February eleventh, Rappahannock Record where they're located. The one that's used the most right now is in the Kilmarnick parking lot. And I wanna thank the town of Kilmarnick, whoever maintains their Facebook page. In one day, they have had over a hundred and eighteen likes, which means someone has viewed it. And on top of that, forty-five shares. So this seems to be a good way of getting out advertising. And what we saw, we're measuring essentially how many gigabits per day is being used at each pole. We, before that announcement came out, we were around one or two gigabits. Now we're around two to four gigabits. So it's saying it's doubling the, essentially the usage, so it's a good thing. We're trying to figure out how to stimulate more and more use at the other sites. One is right here at the county, which gets tremendous results. And obviously, because it's right underneath the tower at the courthouse. But you're talking forty to fifty megabits per second symmetrical, essentially, with virtually one millisecond latency. So again, people wanna come, and we're, we like the concept to refer to as internet on the go. You come, you download, upload, and then you move on. So this is a good site, the one in Kilmarnick evidently is a very good site because of the usage. And then we need to know more about the sites that we've picked out on Route 354. There's one at the Caratomen.
Baptist Church.
Baptist Church, thank you. The Thomas Landing right near the boat launch area. And we were trying to pick areas that we could get, that were county-owned. And the other area is the Nutsville Recycling Center, another one that's performing very well. So we're trying to do that, we're looking for where to place the next three, the remaining three poles. And we're, we're collecting a list, we have a list of about eight sites right now. We're trying to narrow it down, which is the best one for the county. And then we'll get those up going, going. So, any questions?
Can you just let the public know how close or how far away did you be from the SMARTPoles?
What, what do you mean by that?
Distance.
Oh, oh. It, it's not a perfect radius, it's a cone, and we've been focusing, putting it out in the parking lot. I have personally measured about a football field away, so roughly three hundred feet. It's supposed to go to about six hundred feet, but I either run into a building or trees when I've, I've tested the full distance. But certainly, if you're anywhere in the parking lots that we've established that they're in, you're gonna get the signal. And it's full bars when you, when you go ahead and use it. And I encourage you, if you just wanna try it tonight, go over to this one. I've, I've talked to about a few other people who have been using them constantly, and they said, wow, it works when it rains. And most people here know what their cellular does when it rains, so, anyway.
Any questions for Dr. Silverman? Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have is the public hearing section, Mr. Gill.
Mr. Chairman, your first public hearing deals with a proposed amendment to Section two dash fifty-four of the Laxton County Code of Ordinances. The Code of Virginia was recently amended to allow the maximum security fee assessment that is allowed to be collected on all traffic and criminal convictions in both the district and circuit courts to be increased from ten dollars currently to a maximum of twenty dollars. Our local ordinance needs to be amended to reflect this increase, assuming you all want to collect this additional money. This additional money will also help to offset the additional security and bailiffs that the sheriff has requested to support the court system. This proposed ordinance amendment has been advertised as required by law, and to date, I've had no response from the public, and I don't believe anyone had signed up. No one has signed up, but you can certainly ask if anyone would like to speak. And that's all I have, I'd be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay, gentlemen, you have any questions that follow, moving over to public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is now open, anyone in the audience want to comment? Okay, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this amendment be adopted.
Y'all have heard the, the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it unanimously. Alright, the public hearing for the proposed solar facility ordinance, two dash twenty-five dash twenty-one, Mr. Bryant, Barnes? Thank you, gentlemen.
May take a second or two for Mr. Rowe to put the PowerPoint up on the screen. Also, wanna kill these lights? I think this is the topic that most people are here for tonight, so. Brian's gonna introduce the topic, talk a little bit about the proposed ordinance, and then field any questions that the board may have of him before the public hearing is open. Anyone else wanna sign the sign-up sheet before we close that out?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. As you guys know, I've been working on this subject for about a year and a half, so. We're here tonight to have a hearing on the main draft ordinance. What do I need to do, Glenn?
Maybe it's too far from the computer.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get you, I'm just gonna say click it.
Just like the last hearing, this, this issue was advertised at the same time. Go ahead and click it, Glenn. For, for the required amount of time, this, this issue has been heard by the Planning Commission in public hearing, and it comes to you from them with a recommendation for approval, six to zero. Tonight is a public hearing before you. I'm a big history buff, as you guys know. Federalist Papers are my kinda go-to thing when things aren't right in the world, especially Federalist Paper number ten. James Madison, Federalist Papers number ten, was talking about faction and turmoil in a republic. And, and I think that's very applicable to our time. How do you deal with tumultuous issues in a republic and a democracy? How do you deal with people who disagree with each other? And I like this one line in here, "Through the medium of a chosen body of citizens whose wisdom may best discern the true interests of their country and whose patriotism and love of justice will be least likely to sacrifice it to temporal or partial considerations." And I think that's what a public hearing is to me, is a, is a chosen body, you all, to be free from our partial considerations out here and to make the proper decision for the rest of us, kind of, not necessarily in a vacuum, but away from some of the conflicts that the rest of us might have. Go ahead and click that. And this thank you is for everyone here, and I, if you were at the Planning Commission hearing, you heard me do this, and I mean it sincerely. I wanna thank everyone in here, and you guys, and the Planning Commission, they're, most of them aren't here tonight. But this, this isn't the most uncontroversial issue I've dealt with. It's not the most controversial by far, but, but everyone has been civil to a person. I have not had any crosswords from anyone. As far as I've seen, everybody has been gentlemanly and gentleman, gentlewomanly. And I'm, I'm proud of that, and I appreciate that from all of you all. Many folks in here are on different sides of this issue. And, and everyone, at the end of the day, has been very civil to each other, and I appreciate that. And, and now I'm gonna brag a little bit, and I'm gonna say I'm not surprised, because that's just how things are around here. When the rest of the world is going crazy, I think everyone around here is, is pretty darn good, in my book. Alright, so this is kinda where we've been with this, most of you guys are aware of this. Mr. Lee has been kinda with me in this process from the beginning, because he's your liaison to the Planning Commission. We really started on January sixteen, twenty twenty, with that Planning Commission session, and really started working on this issue, developing this draft, and getting everything ready for this, this, this possible adoption. As you can see there, I won't read that verbatim, but, but it's gone through many iterations. The actual hearing we held was on October fifteenth, twenty twenty. And gosh, January sixteen, twenty twenty seems like ten years ago now, the way the world's changed, but anyway, alright. I, I put the draft in there, and you're gonna see it in front of you on your screen. There again, we're not gonna read it verbatim, but a lot of this is for the public's edification if they haven't read it already online. This version does not have the highlights that the online version does. I left the highlights online because that was the last modification the PC made. Just wanted to let people see that. You, you, you see twenty-eight five, twenty-eight three, twenty-eight four, twenty-eight five. Those are the three types of solar facilities we're talking about in the ordinance. But the first two are going to be by right. So a lot of people have had concern with me that we're gonna all of a sudden start regulating rooftop solar, things like that, we are not. Some people have said, hey, it would be great if a school could have panels on their roof or panels on the facility. Well, with this ordinance, we just kinda make that more clear. In the zoning office around the corner, Pete and I have been issuing permits very easily for people who wanna put solar on their rooftops. But to be quite clear, that doesn't, nothing in our code currently says that you can. So we've been on shaky ground with that, I like this because that clarifies that. The main purpose of this ordinance is there for utility-scale solar. And we consider utility-scale solar to be, we're gonna define that in later, later times if, if this is adopted. But, but utility-scale solar is basically for-profit, grid-tied, for-profit, not for your own use or for your farm's use or for your business's use or a school's use or anything like that. The, the proposal tonight is for permission only with a special exception approved by the Board of Supervisors in A1, A2, and M1 districts. It's gonna require a site plan pursuant to Article twenty-two, next slide. Folks, this will address some of the questions I've had in the last couple of days about what all do you look at on a site plan for a solar facility? This would have to be checked off before I would forward it to the Board of Supervisors for a special exception. It looks kinda simple, but checking off any one of these boxes could take as long as a day or two. And crawling around, checking topoes, checking wetlands, checking all those floodplains, things like that. Some of them, some of these we can do in a couple hours in the office on small site plans, where it's just somebody's house, a pool maybe. On a big tract, this is, this could be a big deal. As you go forward in the draft, this, this area of the ordinance draft deals with two things, setbacks and buffers. Setbacks are the distances of any structure from a property line or any other kinda right-of-way, any other kinda mark or some claim that somebody else may have on your property. Setback just refers to, and generally in zoning ordinances, we're only talking about anything that sticks up above the ground, unless it needs a building permit in the ground like a slab. But generally, this is only for above-ground infrastructure. We're looking for a fifty-foot setback, front, rear, and side. If you have a solar facility that's bordering an R1 parcel, it's a hundred foot. VDOT right-of-way, as you see, we've got Route two hundred, Route three fifty-four, and Route three has a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback, which is pretty far, not as far as some counties I've heard, but it's, it's, it's up there. It's in the upper echelon of what you'll see in Virginia. Vegetated buffer, we've got two different kinds here. We've got a planted vegetated buffer, forty-foot wide. We're asking for rows, no closer than eight feet together, we want four planting rows. I wanna see the evergreens planted three foot in the row spacing. We also have an option here for the larger sites where an occupied dwelling or structure might be a thousand linear feet or more away from the installation. You could begin to do what's called a natural buffer. This, this idea was arrived at by looking around at facilities throughout the state. Planning Commission members looked at some facilities where counties, for whatever reason, said no buffer requirement or just stop mowing there. And by golly, some of these buffers look really good, meaning you can't see that there's a solar facility back there. You could two years ago, now there's huge pine trees and poplar trees growing. As you guys know, in this part of Virginia, you have to work hard not to get trees to grow. Trees wanna grow in your gutters, in your yard, wherever you stop mowing, trees will grow. So this idea is to, to, to accommodate that option so that folks aren't grading and wasting money and time planting areas where it's pretty far from any other structures, and there may not be a need to plant something there. So talking about a planted buffer, it doesn't need to be complicated, it doesn't need to be very fancy landscaping. Landscape architects, in my opinion, are good in the yard. When you get over half an acre, an acre, you need a forester and somebody who's a specialist in re-establishing vegetation, not a landscape architect. This type of planting can happen very quickly, this happens to be a Christmas tree farm. I was gonna tell y'all a joke and say I took this picture off of Fleets Bay Road last week, and you would know that I was lying. It's just way too dry. But, but this is, this is about the spacing we're talking about with the planted buffer in this ordinance. Those rows are about eight feet apart, seven feet probably. That in-row spacing might be around three feet. Those are Christmas trees, I wouldn't recommend that for a buffer. You want something that's gonna be a little bit taller and more robust than Christmas trees. But that's the general idea, next slide. Natural buffers, when you're talking about natural buffers, this is an area around here where somebody stopped mowing, and actually, this is only twelve months later, this is what you have. So this is an option for some areas. With the special exception process, you know, you have the option to, to make other conditions, but, but generally, these, these are gonna be pretty hard and fast standards. If you want, I won't read through much of this, except down to the, the stuff about the decommissioning plan. This is where you find the language about shore-to-bonds. We've heard a lot about that, banted about decommissioning. Once the site is done, the county needs to have a guarantee that the money has been set aside to clean up the site whenever that occurs in the future. We're expecting that that's gonna be, that plan's gonna be updated every five years from the date of approval. And we wanna know all of those items. The one thing that I would recommend, if you, if anybody makes a motion to adopt this tonight, you see right there where it says, "Provide financial security information", I would recommend you strike the word "information". I don't know why that's there, doesn't need to be there, it just needs to say "financial security". I've been asked the question, why doesn't it say bond? Well, as we went through, some of the old versions of this did say bond, but we discovered that financial security includes a bond, it also includes other things. There may be other types of financial security, including corporate guarantees and other things that I won't go into, but folks with the industry can enlighten you on, and you have the option of accepting any one of a matrix of those things that you feel appropriate depending on the type of project. I think our, our language here with the, with A-ratings is, is sound. That comes from one of our Planning Commission members who is a member of a rather large bank, and he drew in some of his banking expertise and some of his bonding experience to come up with that language. As you continue on, this is pretty standard stuff on height signs. These are all just performant standards, noise. You've got some noise there that breaks down, operational noise towards construction noise. This is the last page, liability insurance. Several individuals from the public have had concerns to me about liability insurance. Liability insurance would hopefully cover for natural disasters. We have bumped that up to be an annual update. So hopefully, were this to be adopted, that liability insurance being revisited annually is gonna help us keep track of whether that's adequate or not, and, and we'll adjust for changing conditions and changing environment. We require an energy production report. I've never seen this really in any ordinance anywhere else in the state. We wanna have, I, I've heard of a few, I haven't seen them. But, but for the most part, we want an annual production report, and that's gonna be so that the county staff can know, is this facility... And that's going to be so that the county staff can know, is this facility still operating? If it is, there's no need to demand that they clean the site up and idle it down. If they're still producing power then, and everything else is being met, all the other conditions are being met, then everything should be okay. The question from some folks as we went through the PC process was criticism of a site could be idle or not and you wouldn't know it. Well, with the energy production report, that's how we're going to determine idle status. Why special exception? I want the public to know that if this article were adopted and all the other articles that have to be amended and adopted to make it work, we still have a special exception process. If an application comes forward, it is only then coming forward to be heard as a special exception. And that is outlined here in the Code of Virginia. This particular code section also is a code section that pertains to what we have been talking to you guys about with regard to siting agreements. Siting agreements are, as you see here, dedication of real property or substantial cash payments for or construction of substantial public improvements. So it's basically money, it can be money upfront to pay for certain things that the county might need. Once these conditions are granted, those conditions continue until you guys in public hearing modify those conditions in some manner. Revenue share, we've talked about this a little bit. I told you last month I would show you a little bit more about that. This is it. This is also kind of a somewhat new section of code. This allows a revenue share between the county and the solar developer of up to $1,400 per megawatt. On a small facility, smaller facility, that might not be a whole lot. On some of the larger facilities, that might be a substantial amount per year. This obviously doesn't include those first two items we talked about, those ag businesses, the homeowner generator and small ag generators that the state code talks about. We are working on this ordinance right now. I've got most of the bones of it drafted. There's a little more work to do, but I just wanted to kind of have it ready in case that's the direction you guys wanted to go. I'd have it ready. So that definitely needs to be in place prior to you hearing your first applications. That way you can explore that option with somebody who wishes to pursue approval of a project. I won't go through all these. You guys have probably heard quite a bit about all the possible advantages of solar. Next slide. There are some disadvantages as you've been hearing from the ag community and actually you've heard some support from the ag community as well. And I don't want to ignore any of those options. Fewer land options, people worried about a loss of land, having to drive further between their parcels. Rent drivers, a lot of farmers here are tenants, they rent land. They're worried about this possibly driving rental rates up if you have to compete with the utility solar rates. We heard about property rights last month, a little bit from some folks and since then about both ways, property rights, if I want to develop my land into solar. This picture on your right, you see, that's the 2015 world record corn yield and that's about 35 miles is the way the crow flies from here. That land, I do know this gentleman, David Hula, who grew this. In 2019, he upped that to 616 bushels per acre. That's the world record corn yield. That soil, David, he told me, he said, Brian, it's really, it's prime, it's waterfront on the James River. It's beautiful, but it doesn't perk. It shrinks well soil and the groundwater table, even in a drought, is about 30 inches below the surface. So you could never put the first house out there, it would sink. It's just non-developable land. We talked last month about marginal land. What is marginal land? I don't know. This land, somebody might say is almost worthless, but it grows world record corn. Of course, he babysits it and I think he, you know, every week he's doing something different to it and it's largely a demonstration just to show you what a corn plant is capable of. It's not by any means an economically viable system. But that's a good question for us to ask. It's probably a more appropriate topic for the Planning Commission, so I'm not going to talk too much about that. But I think as we modify the comp plan, I think it's time to start addressing those issues. Where's the future of ag? What lands do you really want to nail down and preserve? And who decides what's good land and what's not good land? We've heard a lot about pollution. There again, as your staff person, I have to be kind of neutral in all these things, but I do deal on a daily basis with pollution enforcement. And I've done it today. I've crawled in a couple culvert pipes today based on pollution claims and things like that. And as my grandfather always said, when you point the finger of blame, there's three fingers pointing back at you. So, you know, there's lots of concerns everywhere from farmland pollution. We know that nothing is without, you know, nothing is without sin. Farmland does have its issues, although, you know, it's very tightly controlled and it's a real science. Now, urban pollution, as you see this picture on the right, that's Newport Beach, California after a one-inch rainfall. And when you look at it, probably on your screen, that black plume is real clear. That's a mix of sewage and stuff off the streets. And there's really just, you see all those houses and all that in previous cover, there's no way of avoiding that. There's no way of stopping that or treating that before it gets dropped into the ocean. Solar's here. This is a map from Research Gate. Kid who needed a PhD put this together. You can see North Carolina. North Carolina has over 500 utility scale solar facilities. I've gone down and looked at a few and just to kind of see what we're in for. And you can see they're spreading. North Dakota and Wyoming have avoided any utility scale solar so far and they are the only, they're the only states. Louisiana now has a few in northern Louisiana now, so that map needs to be updated. But it's something we need to deal with. Okay, this is really important. If this is approved at this time, what next? And I've ordered these in number, in order of what would be done. If you decline tonight and decide or next month or whenever to not pursue this ordinance at this time, then nothing of this needs to happen except for number four. If you do decide to approve this, the zoning ordinance for A1 and A2 must be amended to allow utility generation, has to go to the Planning Commission and then come back to you for approval. The zoning ordinance definitions must be amended to add these permitted uses. That's already been done by the Planning Commission and heard. That could come back to you. I left it off tonight just to be efficient with what we're doing. If you declined this article, there's no point in sending the definitions to you. The number three would be the next thing you'd have to do and that's the revenue sharing ordinance we talked about. That's very simple. That is just like the hearing you just had, that goes in your Code of Ordinances. That's almost complete with drafting, probably needs to be sent to Jim first and then it would come straight to you for a public hearing. Comprehensive plan should be amended to clarify these issues and identify suitable areas, no matter what you do tonight. If you decline or if you adopt this, I think the Planning Commission should tighten up where utility scale solar is appropriate and where it isn't. I really, I'm biased because I work with the, I live and die by the comp plan, but I think the comp plan is just really nice liability protection. It's like an insurance policy for a county. If you do what's in your comp plan and base all your decisions in the comp plan, you're generally protected. That being said, with that other state code section I showed you, you don't technically have to do that to approve a utility scale solar facility. You can waive substantially in accord with the comp plan. I don't recommend that, but that's certainly an option out there. Chapter six and seven are coming up. We're working on chapter six now. I think those are really going to help guide your applications if you get any. And this last thing, I mean it, Lancaster County deserves the best. A lot of folks say, well, this county does that, this county does that. I don't care. This is where I live and this is who I work for. I want what's best for this county. I know you guys do too. These people do, otherwise they have better things to do, I'm sure. But we're truly on our own to develop what's best for this county. I found that out the hard way this year when you can't get many state agencies on the phone, they don't show up. We're here and we're on our own. I think we're well-equipped to make the best decision. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
You've mentioned a lot of like things that, in my opinion, will require some staff time to address going forward. Nowhere in this ordinance does it list a fee for this particular type of special exception. Has that been talked about or addressed or what could that fee potentially be? I think it's $5,000 for like poles for like cellular towers.
Cell tower, yes.
So could that be something that would be considered in this ordinance now or would that be something considered down the road or?
That would be part of our fee schedule and you all can amend that at any time. And I know you and I have talked about that, Mr. Bellows, and that's something the board could decide at a later time, what the fee would be. And I'd have to defer to Mr. Cornwell to see if there's any limit on such a fee. You're correct in there, cell tower special exception fee, that is $5,000. So just to elaborate a little bit further on Brian's last slide, if you all did choose to adopt this tonight, you know, someone is not going to be able to come in tomorrow and get a permit. I mean, all of those things that Brian listed are going to have to happen. You're probably at least four months out before a special exception application can come before you for approval. So there's time to look at, you know, setting a fee, an appropriate fee in the time moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right now, the standard special exception fee is $400. On a one-acre project for, you know, something that might be fair, on a larger project, that may not be fair.
Yeah, I just think we have to account, I don't know where else unless it's in the siting agreement, you have to account for some of that staff time that's going to have to be paid for by taxpayers.
Yeah, the notice to adjacent property owners is going to be a big one as well as site plan review, site inspections, things like that. It could be, it could be big.
But then even going forward, like the buffer maintenance, so if somebody makes a complaint, somebody's got to be the person to go out there and say, okay, that's not in compliance and then that requires either staff or somebody and time and money.
Yeah, I think it's important that the county, if you do go forward with this, that you make sure that the money that is being offered to the county and the potential benefit to the county is substantial enough to make all that more than worthwhile and the other things.
Any more questions? Yes, sir.
I pointed out last month, you asked a question about what is marginal land? And there's a place to start that discussion and that is with the publication that I cited that was from the 60s. Now, no doubt that could be updated, but in the 60s, they did the land assessment and anything three and above, I think, or three and below, however you look at it, was considered marginal for crops. The thing that you raised with that picture of the man and woman in the cornfield and you said, you know, it's not good for development, but it's darn good for crops. So why would we not say that's good for crops? Because the choice is not development or crops, you know. The other thing I want to say is, when we have special exceptions, theoretically, if you don't, if you don't keep up your end of the bargain, we can say, okay, that's it. And there's no way in this world that we're ever going to call somebody if their buffer isn't right or they didn't have their liability insurance annually updated, we are not going to tell them to rip all that stuff out of the ground. So it's meaningless when it gets right down to it, in my opinion. The other thing is, just based on your four things in the last slide or next to last slide, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. Because you said if we approve this, we want it to amend the comprehensive plan. Well, let's do that first. Let's look at, you know, last month, the Business Relations Advisory Committee asked the two of us, join with them and see if we can't align the comprehensive plan with the strategic plan. So we're all focused in the same direction. And this to me seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. The last thing I'll say is, we have a comprehensive plan and we have procedures. And if we do this or just like that, we can change agricultural to an industrial use, which is what solar is. What happened to the procedure where someone would normally apply for rezoning of their property to be M1? And if that was granted, then they apply, then they go through for the solar facility. That to me is a logical way to proceed and not to take prime agricultural property and convert it to industrial use. So that's all I want to say.
Any further questions or concerning, Mr. Brian?
No, I think everything's been answered.
Okay, all right. Do you all want to say anything before I open up this? Any comments you want to make before I open this up to the public here, to the public for comments? Okay, all right, I'm getting ready to open this up to the public for comments. Let me find my list. Again, you have five minutes to speak and when you have a minute left, I'm going to hold this up. When you get started, I'm going to start my time and when it goes off, after I hold up the one minute, when it goes off, it's time for you to stop. Okay? Okay. First one. Mr. Todd Flowers.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Flowers is with Dominion and he has 10 slides he wants to go through. Your job is going to be more difficult because you are under a five-minute time limit. The reason Brian got more is because he's staffed, so. So, Mr. Paddle, don't start your timer until Glenn gets his slide deck up there. It's only 10 slides and they're very, very general in nature.
Well, that's coming up. Just want to appreciate you all having me here tonight. Also a resident of District 3. Love being here in the county. Met with Mr. Barnes and Mr. Gill a couple of months ago with two other colleagues, Anita Powell and Robin Lucy to give a general update about Dominion Energy. And we thought it'd be good to kind of present some of that same material. I will go through this fairly quickly, but please feel free to reach out to me at any point in time if you have any questions. This is a general update of what's going on in the Commonwealth of Virginia and some plans that Dominion Energy has going forward to meet some mandates that have been passed by our legislators. Next slide, please. Last year, the Virginia Clean Economy Act went into effect. This was very transformative legislation. It requires a company to essentially shut down its fossil fuel power generation and convert to clean energy power generation. We're planning to do that in a very accelerated fashion. We're required to by law. In Virginia, that means building or acquiring over 16,000 megawatts of solar generation by 2035. We have a very detailed plan on how we're going to achieve that. So it's a significant growth in renewable energy, carbon-free electricity, very aggressive, and we're going to be building utility scale solar facilities all across the Commonwealth of Virginia. Next slide, please. A couple of key things and Mr. Barnes did touch on this. There've been some changes to the tax provisions. One is your traditional MNT property tax, the other is revenue share. UVA and the Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy has produced an application called SOLTAX. It's a tool that locality should use to evaluate those two options. You can put in different scenarios and evaluate the revenue stream under both scenarios. So, Mr. Barnes, if you have any questions using SOLTAX, please let me know. I'd be happy to walk you through it. Another thing you should be aware of, legislation just went through both chambers of our legislature a couple of days ago that modifies the revenue share. Now that $1,400 per megawatt hour is going to be increased every five years by 10%. So when you model the various revenue streams, over time, the county can expect to see increased revenues from these utility scale solar facilities. Another thing to note that the revenue share model has no impact on your composite index. So as you build these facilities, you aren't going to see any decreased revenues from the state to go towards school funding. Next slide. Siting agreements are another really useful tool for localities. The funding through these siting agreements can be used for ball fields, which we heard earlier tonight. They can be used for the expansion of broadband, which were so critically important during the pandemic so that schoolchildren can learn remotely or really anything that's in the county's comprehensive plan. So developers like Dominion Energy So developers like Dominion Energy would like to discuss citing agreements with the county in ways that we can help fund things that are critical to your infrastructure or any other item in your comprehensive plan. It's a really great tool that's been passed by our legislators to give more benefits to localities to host these utility-scale facilities. Next slide. One thing that's changing, so I'm not going to touch on this right, you know, a whole lot. There's new legislation that now expands citing agreements all across the Commonwealth. It's waiting for the governor's approval. The, the current language requires that citing agreements be on property that is eligible to be considered an opportunity zone. That's very likely going to change. It's been through the Senate, been through the House of Delegates, now just waiting for the governor's approval. So citing agreements certainly apply all across the county here. We've touched on a lot of the benefits to localities. Mr. Barnes mentioned it's certainly tax revenues are a, a major consideration. Great to have a very stable revenue stream for 35 years plus. I think you're pretty aware of all these other benefits, so I'm not going to go through that. Next slide. I want to point out that utility-scale projects, there's going to be a limit on the number of projects you see developed. The projects that we're developing have to connect to transmission lines. There's a single transmission line that traverses the county. At some point in time, likely after one or two utility-scale projects that interconnect at this transmission voltage, that line will be at capacity. So you're not going to see solar projects all throughout the county. That line, once it hits capacity, there'll be no additional projects where that line will be capable of accepting the energy that's injected into that line. One more slide. And then there's the distributed projects. These are projects that are connected at distribution voltage, typically 20 megawatts and less. The company does have a new tool, and I put the link up here. You can go in and, and look at the three-phase lines within the county. You're only going to see these projects built on three phases. And there's a legend that says how much capacity those lines can take. And again, there's going to be a point in time where even the distribution system isn't capable of accepting more energy. I think that's the last slide. There's a timeline for you to see when the typical time it takes to build a project. I won't go into those details. If you have any questions, feel free to, to reach out to me. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. You were giving some good information because we've had comments coming into us and questions and so on about some of those things. So that helps, and thank you for that. All right, next one is, I've got too many papers in front of me. Here we go. Mr. P., PJ Haney?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a handout that I'd like to share with the board supervisors. Good evening, Board of Supervisors and members of Lancaster County. I first like to thank you, you, the members of the Board of Supervisors.
If you want to remove your mask, you may.
Thank you. The citizens of this county appreciate you and all the hard work each of you put into keeping this county moving forward. My name is PJ Haney. I'm a fifth-generation farmer and proud product of the Northern Neck of Virginia. After graduating from college, I chose to return to the Northern Neck to pursue my childhood dream of farming. As a kid growing up in the Northern Neck, I always admired Lancaster County for being innovative and as an early adapter for change. Lancaster County has been the first in the Northern Neck for a lot of things. Lancaster County was the first in the Northern Neck to have a hospital, something I was closely tied to as I was the first baby born at Rappahannock General. First in the county, in the Northern Neck, to have a waterfront and golf resort. In high school, I enjoyed sports games here in the county because you were the first with a fast-food franchise, McDonald's. I think Lancaster County was the first to have traffic lights where we'd have to maneuver combines and tractors through Main Street. The first county with a major subdivision project. As a kid, I planted corn and soybeans on the land in which Hills Quarters now host homes and recreational activities. As a county who has always has its, had its foot on the gas for adoption, for adopting change and innovation, I ask the question, why are you pumping the brakes now? Neighboring counties have adopted solar ordinances. Northumberland, Richmond, Westmoreland, Middlesex and Gloucester Counties are all getting solar products. Ladies and gentlemen, we all know that clean energy is the future. It is the way we can be sustainable and help to do our part for a healthy world. All of us farmers in the room can attest to clean energy needs. We all have to put depth, diesel exhaust fluid in our tractors, combines, and even pickup trucks. We, as consumers, see the ads on TV where all of the vehicle manufacturers have a charge to bill a certain percentage of electric vehicles. We all see Tesla cars in the county. How are we going to power these vehicles without burning more coal or emitting more fossil fuels? The answer is solar. The U.S. Energy Information Administration, which is the handout that I showed you, that I passed out to you, shows that 80% of all new power plants that are built in 2021 will be carbon-free, with 40% of that going in the form of solar. Ladies and gentlemen, the train is coming. The train is coming. We can see the light, and we have two choices to make. We can get on this train, or we can watch this train go by. I think Lancaster County should embrace the future, join the clean energy transfer, and not get left behind by its neighbors. Thank you for having my comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tommy Todes, Jr. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name, my name is Thomas Lee Todes, Jr. I live in District Two. My ancestors have started this county years ago, and their names on the slight, slight next through the county building here, Todes. And my grandparents, Lucy and Harry Lee Todes, had the first telephone in Upper Lancaster Litton. People had to come use their phone to make phone calls. And I would like to put solar panels on my farm to help future, um, help electricity grid. I have shut down, they have shut down coal electric plant at 301 Bridge now, and it puts more load on the nuclear power plants in Surrey, Calvert Cliffs, and Lake Anna. Virginia passed the Clean Air Act to carbon-free by 2045. So that would be electric cars, trucks, machinery are coming in the near future. That would be one for more, need for more electricity in the future. I love nature and wildlife, solar panels don't pollute, make noise, harm animals, and in some states, they can raise cows on them. I've studied the solar panels for them and even visited them, and they were all well-maintained. Grass cut, fence around them, trees, bushes planted. And in a couple of years, you won't even know they're there. Haynesville Correction Prison already has their solar systems all well-rounded. And I've noticed that, and it maintained, and it looked fine. And they wouldn't put them out if it was going to harm the prisoners or anyone around them. And, um, the county would benefit by the solar. They would get $10 to $15 million over 40 years, and that would help the county considerably. And, um, it would help the rescue squad, the fire departments, um, the schools, and all the facilities in the county. And, and it wouldn't hurt anything in the county and harm the people in the county or the land in the county. And I think we should need to go to solar, and it'd be our future, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Todes. Mr. O'Reilly Simmons.
Gentlemen, my name is O'Reilly Simmons. I'm in Mr. Bellows' District Three. I've grown up around here, lived here all my life, so has my family. My grandfather was the first county extension agent in Lancaster. He helped pioneer the electric lines into the county. And I think that you have a situation here where you can, can step up and, and bring in new technology that will work for everybody and do it in a way that doesn't adversely affect the county. I know you all are concerned about the looks of things and what people see when they're driving up and down the roads. But I'll say that in 30 years of practicing law, I did a lot of special exceptions hearings. And when you go into things like 250-foot buffers without any flexibility, you paint yourself in a corner. You can't allow any changes then. I would suggest that you allow flexibility and allow these buffers to be pulled back if certain conditions are met or if it's a situation where it's properly screened. You're wasting land. This is, if you're worried about taking crop land out of production, don't waste it on a 250-foot buffer when you've got four rows of plantings three feet apart. Another thing is, is that, that the transmission lines in the county, as noted by the Dominion rep, greatly limit where these things can go and how many there can be. So I think that covers that situation. You talk about other crop land. A lot of this land, including my farms, are one, are one crop fields that get so wet in the wintertime, you can't put another crop in. So they're not exactly prime crop land. A lot of the farmers around here, they don't have a retirement plan. They don't have a 401 from some company that's going to pay them. They have to look at what they can do with their property and their, their things to take care of their family. And this allows certain ones, some of them, to have another option. If they don't want to put a solar farm on your land, you don't have to. This is just another option of ways to use your land. One thing I was thinking about, I don't know whether the solar people would like it or not, but we need, need places where the birds, the quail, the turkey and all can feed. You can require them to plant something like chickpeas or some low-growing growth under these. They've got fences around them so the coyotes can't get to the birds. That's a huge problem with coyote deprivation with, with the, the local wildlife. And that's one way to help solve this, keep it, keep it green underneath and keep it looking good. You talk about the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is not cast in stone. It's meant to be flexible. You're supposed to be able to change. It's, it's a suggestion, not a requirement. And I think that you can go forward with this ordinance and then amend the comprehensive plan to, to, to meet what the ordinance requires. A lot of thought and a lot of work's gone into this ordinance. It's not like it's something that you're just picking up willy-nilly. I was in a lot of the, the Planning Commission hearings, and it was thoroughly gone over. Tax base, you know, I own enough property in the county that every time the tax rates go up, it hurts. And you can't keep raising tax rates on everybody, on their homes and things like that. It's going to get to the point where you won't be able to afford to live in the county. You've got to have an alternate source of revenue. This is one that doesn't create more traffic. It doesn't create any more demands other than some, a little bit of time to make sure they're doing it right. I agree, you ought to charge them upfront to get back the money you spend on, on doing it so the taxpayers aren't fronting the bill. But at the same time, this is a, is a great revenue stream that'll be here for at least 40 years on each one. And I think that's something that you need to consider. One other thing that was brought up was requiring rezoning. That is, is just totally impractical. Being an attorney, I can tell you that, you can't rezone a lot here and a lot here. That's called spot zoning. It's not allowed by law. And I think that that's not a process that would work in this situation. And the special exception process, I've always found it to be a great way around situations like this because everybody has input on it. You all can make whatever requirements you need on it to make it work for the county. If the developer doesn't want to do it, he doesn't want to do it. But it allows everybody to have some give and take. It doesn't paint everybody in a corner with a bunch of rigid requirements that don't work in a lot of situations. So I would ask that you all give strong consideration to passing this ordinance because I think it's well-thought-out and well-gone-through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Charlotte Silverman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Charlotte Silverman. I'm from District One, Lorsen's District. And I'm a chemist. I'm also a, a technical project manager. And the reason I say that is that this is really a lot of, of scientific aspects concerning, concerning the, the solar panels that have brought up both when it comes to chemists or, or chemicals on, on the fields as well as electric grids and so on and so forth. I currently have solar panels on my house. I think this is really a question about resource management. A lot of times we talk about our marine resources and our shorelines. This is an opportunity for us to do something with our other, uh, land purchases or, or land areas. So I, I think the fact that we have, in this area, we have inexpensive, inexpensive farmland. We also have sufficiently sunny days. We've, we've seen that from various presentations previously here. So it's an appropriate use of Lancaster County resources. It's future planning and provide economic development for the county. We've also heard about the fact that it's environmentally friendly, environmentally friendly industry compared to other energy-producing industries such as coal, oil, power plants, and so on and so forth. So in short, and there's been a lot of other comments beforehand around this topic, good resource management and appropriate future planning for Lancaster County residents. So I, I really urge you to please approve this ordinance for the residents of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Susan Marsh.
Good afternoon. I live in District Two, and I am just asking you, please, to look at the big picture before you adopt the ordinance. I think it needs tweaking. I think the comprehensive plan needs adjustments. And like Dr. Westbrook said, you need to work together to make it feasible. One of the concerns that I have is decommissioning. It is less expensive to build new panels than it is to recycle the ones that are no longer usable. If they're containing carcinogens, and where are they going to go when you decommission them? If you're buying new to replace them? They're going to have, the dumps don't want them. You can't put them in the landfills because they're going to contaminate the ground. So I just ask you to reconsider that. I consider them, even with buffers, to be eyesores just as, they can be just as unsightly as the litter that we see. And I do make a valiant effort to pick up the trash all along my roadfront property. Most of the companies that are instilling these panels are LLCs. And they can go bankrupt and have no liability. So I would like you all to consider surety to be incorporated by Dominion to, to guarantee that if an LLC goes belly up, then at least you can fall back on Dominion. They're not going bankrupt. So I would just ask you all to reconsider, not to deny it, not to pass it, but table it until you can iron out the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Peyton Waller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pastor Peyton Waller, District Three Church, my church in New St. John's Baptist Church in Cape Town, Virginia. I come to show my support for this solar project because my concern, it would reduce the pollution and from the coal-fired plant. my concern, it will reduce the pollution and from the coal-fired plants and things that will give us, which would so hurt and affect our low-income communities and mainly African-American communities. According to a two thousand twelve stat, uh, report by the NAACP, fifty-three percent of the people living within three miles of the these world's seventy-five seventy-five worst polluted coal plants are African-American or people of color. So I'm standing on behalf of this and looking at this that it can improve our environmental e- economy, improve our environmental justice by reducing the contamination of our shallow well, shallow wells because most of these, again, affect the low-income families and the families and of of people of color. And so my concern is the chemicals will not be going into the ground and soils and stuff. And it will help to to make it safer for our communities. And this is why I'm not going to hold you for no, I don't need five minutes, but I just want to help because I believe supporting this is also in line with the Commonwealth, with the Commonwealth and committed to transition away from fossil fuel and into a new cleaner and clearer source of energy. And I think the solar project will be a start and in the right direction for us to start working towards that. And I do want to reiterate that I do have a letter that was drafted up and was signed by all, just by all the pastors in the northern, in 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 the Lancaster County area. And I would like to leave that with y'all if you want, but just what every pastor have agreed to and are back in this. And that's all. And I thank you for your time.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
You say all pastors.
Majority of the pastors.
Majority of the pastors.
In Lancaster County.
It's just the black pastors?
No, this is African-American and Caucasian pastors. All, no, just not black pastors.
Okay.
It's just, no, it's it's all the pastors in the Lancaster County area.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I got the list and got the name and they got all them on there.
All right. Pastor Ulysses Turner.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ulysses.
I I did some research and I was pretty impressed with my research, but then I realized that my research is inadequate with all of these well-versed people dealing with this project. I I found out what toll means, the the time of use rates. I found out what NIM means, the net energy metering. And I said, why, why would I speak on something I really don't know that much about? What I do know is people. I I am in the people business. I'm the pastor, senior pastor at Bula Baptist Church in Lively, when we, our congregants, serve every one of your districts. What I've heard tonight is we're concerned about looks. Sometimes it sounds like to me that we're more concerned about the looks over the life, more concerned about the land over the living, which we are more concerned about the property over the people. There's an economic impact that this project does entail. And I believe that if we can allow money, more money, to be in the pockets of the consumer, it will benefit all of us. As a pastor, as a church, we often are the mediator between the people and the utility companies, especially during this last year. Most of our calls for help is because the utility bills being high. I believe, I'm not sure, that this project, this solar project, will lower the utility bills, especially the electric bills, and to put, therefore, put more money in the pockets of the consumer. The farmland, I I did, this is interesting. I looked at, out of the thirty-one states that went solar, there was an increase in their economy. And I looked at states, number sixteen as far as agriculture was Georgia, Utah, number thirty-seven, New York, number twenty-five, Texas, number four. And all of these states have adopted this solar project. When I looked at this, they said in over forty years, it'd be ten million dollars worth of revenue that would come back into the community. That's a major economic impact on our community. Will put more money in the pockets of the consumer. Therefore, will have a major impact on all of us in this community. So I support this. I support this this project. When I go through Westmoreland County, when I go to Gloucester, when I go to Saluda, when I go through all of these different places and I see these solar projects, to me, it looks very neat. And I understand they're talking about a buffer, but I do not want us to take the look over the lives of the people. I think the presentation about the buffer and the greenery that'll be around it should be exciting to all of us. But even without that, let's make sure that we put the lives of our people, this clean energy, before we put the look of the county. Both are important. Both are very important. We need to be advertisers to those who come here to visit. But we have to be, make sure, we have to make sure that the lives of the people, the the welfare of the people in the county is our main focus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's see. I I think this is a first name or a last name. Let me spell it. A, I believe it's A-R-A-L-E. Is somebody's name close to that?
Ava Lewis.
Ava, oh, okay. I apologize for doing, you know, but thank you.
Sorry, I have sketchy writing, of course. Thank you all for letting us voice our public comments tonight. And my name is Ava Lewis and I'm from District Five. Supervisor Westbrook covered some concerns about the enforcement of compliance for things like the buffers. And thank you for that. So not going to go into that. And Susan Marsh can also address concerns about the decommission. And I'm just going to say a few things about that, and that is the section twenty-eight five-two I, decommissioning plan. Mr. Barnes discussed the change in the previous term of security bond being changed to financial security information. And that term just seems vague to me. What does financial security information mean? And I talked to some state agencies and they suggested looking at what other counties had done, how they had addressed some concerns, and I did. And more specific terms were used, and that is security bond or a cash escrow, that kind of thing. I'm sure you all can come up with something at. But decommissioning is pretty serious. This is toxic waste management. And I really think that more consideration needs to be put into the decommissioning, being specific about it, and having, being sure that this is going to be able to be financially taken care of. One of the things that I think Mr. Simmons said was that this would be a revenue stream. But we want to be sure that this does not end up costing the county in the end, in the future here. That's all I have to say. Everybody has covered the other things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Charles Costello.
Charlie Costello, District Two. Heard, I agree with Dr. Westbrook when we talk about comprehensive plan being first. We talk about projects. Project is not just one thing. It's going to encompass a number of different lots, plots, twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty acres here and so on. And I've looked at an item that Map Services PJM dot com for Lancaster County on January twenty-fifth. And it shows six projects. I'm not sure about the western ones. Well, that's in Richmond County, some of them. But I do know at least three of them are here. One of them is seventy megawatts. Another one is thirty megawatts. They're all up around the, those are up near the Alfonso area and all. And the other one is a hundred megawatts. And that I, by looking at the map, which is black, so you can't see the roads, it's very nice, but it does show the projects. And I believe when Mr. Flowers was showing for Dominion, it looked to me like those little dots you may have seen on there were projects. Now, the projects for a hundred megawatts is how much? How much acreage do we use to do that? I understand it's somewhere between eight and ten acres per megawatt. Let's say it's eight. So a hundred megawatts uses eight hundred acres of land. I think we ought to have some feel for where these things are going. The same thing with the seventy and thirty up around Alfonso. The others amount to five hundred megawatts. Now, one hundred and fifteen kilovolts lines will not support very much. In fact, I've had some things where they show how many things it could take. They said a hundred and seventy-one. And that's under the current one hundred and fifteen kilovolts lines, the current. Doesn't say that Dominion hasn't got to up those to two-thirty or higher. Could be done. It probably will be done. Not tomorrow, but sometime in the next ten, fifteen years. I've been here thirty years. I'm not going to be here, out here in forty years, to be seeing what's happening. You might, Chase. Some of the others around here, we ain't going to be here, but Brian would be. It's important for them, hopefully, is right. But it's to be thought of. And when you're thinking of, these are the project, you've got to put all these pieces together. Are you going to do a special exception for a project which is going to encompass all of these various bits and parts? You want to know where they are. You've got to have a feel for where these are going. It doesn't just happen. There are many more things to be thought of before you get done. Yes, thank you, Ulysses. But it is the way you're going to have this. And also, the ten million dollars they keep talking about, the prod, these projects are only supposed to go twenty-five to thirty years before they're decommissioned. That's what I was told. That's what was blown up and other things. So what is it? Is it thirty years or is it forty? And also, if you're doing that ten million, that's two, less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And how much do we get on one cent of taxes? Is it two ninety-five?
Two seventy.
Two seventy. So one cent of tax for forty years will get you more than that particular item. Give it a consideration, what you're selling and where you're coming from. Be careful. It's important what you do is what's coming down the track. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This one got me again. R-O-N, I guess it's D. Who's out there?
Ronnie Forster.
That's Ronnie?
Yeah.
He he always tried to confuse me. All right, Mr. Forster.
I'm Ronnie Forster from District One. I'm in the Alfonso area. I spoke to all of y'all. I just think that this needs to be really thought of a lot. Brian has done an excellent job. The board has done an excellent job in listening to us for over a year and a half now. It's a lot to consider. You know, a lot of things have been brought up tonight, the wildlife of the county. You know, where's all this wildlife is going to be when they start putting all these solar panels up and solar? Couple other things. You got to consider the chemicals that these solars, or panels will put out even when it rains. The farmland is, won't be any good anymore. I don't want to see, uh, no good farmland taken and put in solar. I know it's, I'm not completely against renewable energies, but I am against taking forestry land, farmland to create something that we don't even know a lot about yet. In other states, they have lots of problems. There's been a lot of lawsuits. If you look at what happened to Texas last week, they were relying on thirty-five percent solar and see where they got them. So it's just a lot of things that the county needs to think about before we go along with this. And like I say, I'm not opposing of all solar, but I just think we need to really think this through before we make some major mistakes. And, you know, we, it just needs to be done right. Get it right the first time and you don't have to do it the second time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albert Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Albert Pollard from District Five, resident of Irvington. First, I just wanted to say that I appreciate you all being up here, having been elected official. Nothing is harder than local government. Nothing is harder than land use. You know, I grew up in New Tommy Lee Toles. I can remember when he was, you know, driving a tractor and he had two-by-fours. His dad had put two-by-fours on the pedals of the tractor so that his feet could reach it. And then Ava Lewis was on the other side of Tommy Lee Toles. And I knew her, you know, she worked for my dad for a long time and just thinks so highly of of Ava and Tracy. So you don't have an easy job. But that having been said, we all need to be respectful and speak our piece. And I did want to come here and speak in favor of the ordinance. As background, I work in renewable policy and certainly this project, this ordinance is not about the project, but it really is about the project. And I don't think that those two things can be separated about the project that's contemplated for the upper end of the county. And there is a limited amount of capacity on that one fifteen KV line. You know, all of the projects that are in the PJM interconnection queue cannot be built. And, you know, I think there is limited capacity, particularly with the project going in on up in Richmond County. So I don't think that we're in danger of being overrun with solar. I think this project will be very low visibility from the road, perhaps no visibility from Route Three. Certainly, it'll be visible from Route Six Hundred, but from the primary arterial road, I think it will be very low impact. You never want to see farmland loss, but it's, this is a relatively low percentage of farmland in terms of the amount of farmland that would be used in this project. And I certainly think that in the special exception permit, that's a perfectly valid thing to consider. If another project comes up and it's ninety, hundred percent farmland, then you all have the ability to to say no to that. And then two more points, well, a couple more points. It does not affect the composite index. And every time there's a new waterfront home and, you know, they do us a lot of good, but they affect the composite index. I don't know that it can get any worse. I don't know if this will fix the composite index, but it's not, you know, this does not impact the composite index. Financial surety bonds are defined in the Code of Virginia. And I'm not a lawyer. I don't give legal advice, but you you might want to check with your counsel because I do think that that is defined. And lastly, I do know the company that is applying, or that would likely be applying where this ordinance to be adopted, and they are a reputable firm. and they are a reputable firm. And I speak very highly of them. And then the last thing I'd say is, I can't think of a thing that Jackie Barrett and I agree on, but, except for this. And, you know, if Jackie Barrett and I agree on something, it can't be all bad. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Attorney Hubbard? William?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. And it's tough to follow up, Mr. Pollard, but I'll do my best. I'll keep it brief. First, I wanna thank everyone here tonight. Mr. Barnes, everyone on this board, everyone that's been involved in this. As, as Mr. Pollard mentioned, it's not an easy task. And I appreciate the diligence and comprehensiveness in addressing these issues. I'm here wearing two hats. Obviously, I've been here from the, from the very get-go with this, this particular issue. But I'm also here as a landowner, one that has an interest in solar projects, in particular, one down and right outside of Whitestone. Everything I could say has already been said by people much smarter than I. So I'm just gonna echo some of the key points. First, you know, one of the big things in my mind is keeping options open for landowners. That the special exception process is there. It would be required for any project that would be contemplated under the ordinance. As, as I think Raleigh mentioned, we don't, we don't wanna miss opportunities that could be held up with rezoning that is speculative at best. As he said, it's not an easy process. It's not an automatic, come file your application to rezone, and you're gonna have that heard. We want to have a, a system in place that makes this attractive for development consistent with the, with the ordinance, but also something that preserves the landowner's rights to use his property as he or she sees fit. So following up on that is the, the next big thing in my mind. And again, this is following up on what Mr. Pollard and many others, many others have mentioned, is the capacity, the line capacity. It's, it's limited. I mean, we don't want to miss the opportunity that some other project in another locality may take using that capacity. As Mr. Haney mentioned, the, the train, we don't wanna miss that train. So I'd ask the board to consider passing or approving the ordinance. So that way, we're not in a position several years down the line saying, man, I, I really wish we'd done that. I really wish we'd taken advantage of that opportunity. We'll have the opportunity with each project to make sure that it's appropriate and, and well-thought-out and, and tailored to the needs of not only the landowner, but also his, his neighbors. So, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kenner? James Kenner?
Don't move as quick as these young boys do. James Kenner, lively District One. And it's two things, two things happen when you own a piece of land. You need to pay taxes, and you need to come over Lancaster to ask permission to do what you want to do with it. And we really don't need any more opportunities to come to Lancaster and ask questions. This project up in Alfonso y'all talking about is taking seventy percent of it is cut over woodland or woodland. It's not actively being farmed. So you can see where that's coming from. Also, be brief as you can be, we've been kinda having problems in Lancaster County with the wait-and-see. We've missed opportunities when we didn't get access to the water for people that don't live on the water. We haven't got broadband done, which we, this opportunity, or maybe some others, it was a wait-and-see, we missed it. Now, don't be in a wait-and-see mode for the solar. Just get on PJ's train and go on through with it. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jackie Barrett?
Before I top the earlier speakers, a lot of it, they've already said what I have, uh, I'm going to say, and I am Jackie Barrett, District Two, Mr. Palin's district. As I said earlier, some of the other people spoke on the same thing I'm going to speak on. But there is only one transmission line going through the Northern Eck. And from what I understand, it can take two projects, one in Richmond County and one more, and then it's done. It does not have capacity for any more projects. This is something that we don't want to miss it on. We're missing it on too much. With the siting agreements and the money that the solar companies are offering and upfront money, we could get broadband maybe to kids who need it, places in the county that need it. Not a lot of underprivileged people here. And we're talking about, oh, we'll wait and update the comprehensive plan, but, but we can't. It doesn't need to be updated. We can update that later on. We need to get this solar project moving, and we need to go to, get it going forward. The ten to fifteen million dollars in revenue actually got bumped up a little bit tonight from the gentleman from Dominion, because they're going to raise the rate ten percent every ten years, five percent? Five percent every ten years. So it's more money. Did a little bit of figuring, the land that's involved is seventy percent forest land and thirty percent agricultural land. And it looks like it would collect about four hundred thousand dollars in taxes over forty years, where you're going to get fifteen million dollars from a solar project. And, and that's no brainer, four hundred thousand dollars, fifteen million dollars. The county can use it, and the local people can use it. This project could help provide broadband to schoolchildren who currently don't have access to it. The underserved communities, this can help fund underserved communities. And members of the board, I just beg you, do not let this opportunity slip by. Jump on it, let's get this ordinance passed tonight so we can get things rolling. We need to be progressive, not sit around and, and let others take advantage of things, because what's gonna happen? You sit on this ordinance and don't pass it, another county will jump on this thing, on that transmission line, and they will get, they will get the solar project. And we don't need to lose fifteen million dollars because of certain little things that other people may think, well, it doesn't look good or it's taking farmland, but it's not taking any farmland. What you're talking, thirty percent, he might be taking two fifty, three hundred acres of farmland. That's it, of marginal farmland on top of that. So, you know, underserved communities have been left behind long enough. And revenue for that project, this project would help benefit all the citizens of the county. And I really hope that you all pass this ordinance this evening. And thank you so much for putting up with me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Pittman?
Good seeing you, nice, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity and for the work you've done on this. I've been pleasantly impressed tonight with the work that the county planning commission staff and you gentlemen have, have put into this already. I'm a Lancaster County resident, Robert Pittman, Bob Pittman. Live in District Two, live on the farm where I grew up. And I'm a solar energy proponent. My wife and I, five and a half years ago, put a solar-powered backup, battery backup system on our carport, and it has worked very well. And I really like what it does, reduces our electric bill, but it also gives us power when the, when the electricity goes off. My concern with the utility scale solar farms is the preservation of farmland locally for food, for food production over the long haul. Think back to last spring, in March and April. Toilet paper wasn't the only thing in short supply on the grocery store shelves or other store shelves. There were food items missing. You remember? Some meat was in short supply, sometimes eggs or dairy products. And the more we can produce locally, the better off we are. We are too dependent on the trucking industry and fossil fuels to bring food into the Northern Eck. And not everybody, and every farmer, is going to want to raise vegetables or livestock. A lot of our livestock has left the county years ago. But there will be a need, I think, for as much local food production as we can stimulate and, and eat. In my opinion, and this has been covered very well tonight, that solar farms should be put on marginal lands such as cut-over timberland or the poorer quality soil types. You addressed that somewhat, Mr. Westbrook. What's poor quality? Well, it may be poorly drained, or it may be droughty, or it might be like this. But in any case, the best soil types and the most level ground should be saved for agricultural production, in my opinion. My grandchildren live on and love the farm where I grew up. I wanna leave it to them to farm if they want to, or do otherwise if they want to. I think best place for solar panels is on the roof of a building. It doesn't take up any more land than the building footprint, and it's less intrusive on the landscape. I am concerned about the decommissioning process as well. What's gonna happen to the land and the equipment on it at the end of the useful life? How many of you gentlemen are gonna be on the Board of Supervisors twenty to thirty years from now? No takers. Some of these solar power companies will not be around in twenty or thirty years if it follows the pattern of many startup businesses. Will the money set aside or held for cleanup cover the cost of cleanup thirty years from now? How are you gonna ensure that, or that the money will be there? Will solar panels be considered toxic waste at that time? I would remind you, think back, sixty years ago asbestos was a good idea. You used asbestos siding on your house floor tiles, insulation. Now try to clean up a building that's got asbestos in it. Things change. Our perception of asbestos was good sixty years ago, fifty years ago, but it's not today. So what's gonna happen to the solar panels and the materials in them? The other thing about decommissioning is it's gonna take years to get the soil back in shape for production afterwards. I don't know how many years, but you're gonna have compacted areas, roadways. You're gonna have the soil that will have been disturbed. Probably no fertilizer or lime will have been applied. In the natural, uh, in the natural scope of things, our soils become more acid over time with rainfall. It's just the nature of the parent material the soils are, are made from. So that's something to consider, for the landowner to consider. And stormwater runoff and erosion considerations might need to be addressed. And I'm sure there will be in your plan. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. I encourage you to take the time necessary to study the many facets of this issue. Make the best decision for the citizens of Lancaster County. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ricky Haney?
I have a slide, so please don't stop my time until I have a slide. Well, I'll go ahead while he's doing that.
Mr. Haney, could you take your mask off? It's hard for me to hear.
Both of them. Okay. Good evening. I would like to thank all the members of this, of the Board of Supervisors and the administrative staff of Lancaster County for the work and time that you've put into making Lancaster County a better place for all of its citizens. History will judge the decision that this board makes on renewable energy. Renewable energy is making a positive impact on our nation, our state, and hopefully, we will allow our county to do its part in reducing pollution and making this country a better place to live and to raise our children. Gentlemen, you have the power to participate in cleaning up the environment or being a spectator while neighboring counties install solar projects and take up the space on this transmission line. Gentlemen, you have the, and you have the ability to improve the quality of the air we breathe, to improve the quality of the water we drink, and to make the seafood we eat safer. My father told me, son, all the education you can get is barely enough. You have the power to improve the education of those children who don't have adequate, adequate, adequate access to the internet. My grandfather told me, son, you have an obligation to leave this farm a better place than you found it. We have an obligation to our children and our grandchildren to leave this county a safer place than we found it. I hope each of you got to watch the Bill Gates special on TV, where he talked about the, the next crisis is bigger. Global warming is gonna be bigger than the pandemic. These are some pictures of my farm, the, the land that we are putting in this solar project. And you can look at it, and you can see the erosion. Can you keep going? You see the hills and the slopes. And if you keep looking, yes, they are, they talked about nutrient management plan. Yes, nutrient management plan, but I have to apply fertilizer and chemicals to that land. I can't incorporate it. Well, when it rains, that's going right down those ditches and going to the woods. Mr. Barnes gave you a slide of David Huber. If you looked at that field, everything was flat and level. Believe me, if I could grow six hundred bushels of corn on that land, I wouldn't be putting it in a solar panel, because that would be about thirty-six hundred dollars. The last time I had corn in there, I grew twenty-five bushels to the acre. So, or even though the land is not, he said it's not good, all land is not created equal. In closing, I, I would ask that you would allow the farmer to make the decision on what to do with his land. And, uh, and a couple little corrections. One thing that Mr. Geezer got up, and he was referring to the numbers I stated. He did his for twenty years. This is a forty-year project, but I stand behind those numbers. The other thing that Mr. Forster said about the renewable energy problems in Texas, it was because they didn't winterize the renewable energy, and we all know that. We just got through pledging allegiance to the flag. We said, "One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all." Liberty, the quality of state of being free, the power to do as you please, freedom from physical restraint, positive enjoyment of various social, political, or economic rights. Gentlemen, I ask that, you know, my grandfather used to say, "Wait broke the wagon down." So I hope the wagon of Lancaster County won't get broke down by us waiting and missing this golden opportunity. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scott Forster?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Scott Foster with Gentry Lockout of Richmond. I live in Williamsburg, but I spent some, some nice weekends on Western Branch of the Carrottoon. Our firm represents Open Road Renewables. Craig will speak to you all in a little bit. Our office in Richmond and our office in Roanoke and office in Lynchburg has over forty-two land use cases pending across Virginia for both solar and battery storage. As a result, we, we are very familiar with the requirements of fifteen-two, twenty-two, thirty-two. And in fact, my, my boss, Chip Dix, is the author of that section. We have, uh, we have never needed to receive a waiver for a SIA review for a solar facility in any of those projects that we're working on in Virginia. So, comprehensive plans are general land use documents. You all know that. The language is not intended to anticipate every use. Surrey County, when we had our first project approved there, their comprehensive plan was silent on solar. Project was found to be in conformity with the cotton plan because they applied that general land use, land use language. I served eight years on city council in City Williamsburg. Helped rewrite the two thousand and thirteen comprehensive plan. I, I can appreciate the general nature of that, that language and the need to be able to respond to land use matters that come up throughout the course of the local government. Second, I'd like to provide you an update on some, some new information relating to erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. That's often- That's often been a cost center for locales in dealing with solar facilities, oftentimes with which are the largest land disturbance that the locality has ever seen. Today, budget was released, four positions were funded in DQ to allow localities to opt out of erosion and sediment control, just like they've opted out of stormwater several years ago. In that instance, I believe there were sixty-four localities eligible to opt out and fifty-four have done so. We fully anticipate that to be the case with erosion and sediment control again. So to me, that's signaling a statewide, statewide message on solar that we're going to address erosion and stormwater control in a comprehensive way, as it is now. Brian could tell you, ENS measures are, in the beginning of a project are typically temporary. And then the statewide permitting, uh, stormwater regs, that's when your permanent structures come in. Now we're going to be able to come in and do permanent structures under one set of rules in a comprehensive way and ensure that the bay is protected, your watersheds are protected, really in, in an efficient way. So we're, we're excited about that, hot off the press. Second, excuse me, third, uh, solar has been around in Virginia for several years. Most of the projects that you all drive by when you're in Gloucester or out on Broad's flats, those were approved in the pretty early stages. The industry has come a long way and is continuing to up its game with buffering, mitigation of other impacts to localities, including staff time. It is now, it's now a common occurrence that solar developers proffer to hold localities harmless for third-party costs for engineering and inspections incurred during the development process. That's a big deal.
Repeat that again, sir.
Sure.
And I'll add to you that. Repeat that again.
Uh, it's now common practice in the solar industry for developers to proffer funds, subject to reasonable limit, for third-party costs and engineering associated with the development of a solar facility. So holding you all harmless for, for engineers you may need to hire to come and, come inspect, people to come and help Brian do daily and weekly inspections, et cetera. So, and third, the buffers associated with these projects have improved significantly, and Brian captured that in the ordinance. The projects I'm referring to, the ones you can drive by and see so well, the industry standard has moved beyond that, and I think the one there in New Kent, near Barrensville, we're getting closer to that where you've got a better buffer, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate getting to know you and look forward to being a resource moving forward.
Thank you, sir. That's all, well, except for one, and I'm going to call him later. But I want to go to anyone that may be out there in Zoom land. And first of all, if you're going to participate or you got comments that you want to make, make sure that you raise your hand, that's the icon located near the bottom of your computer screen, or press a star nine on your telephone. And when you unmute it, state your name, your district, and where you, in which you live, and then make your comment. Mr. Carter, you have five minutes, sir, and I will, he can see me, right? Can he see me? All right, and I will be holding up the, the one-minute sign, give you a one-minute warning. All right, sir, you're on. Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's like one of those commercials. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. For the supervisor, you all asked Julian Patterson and Paul Chakatano, myself, to advise you on business matters. So tonight I'm compelled to speak up. Mr. Patterson and Mr. Chakatano, I'm the one that's got the most land use experience. I can, I've been developing, I'm seventy years old. I've spent my whole career working with land use ordinances. I've reviewed the land use ordinance. I believe that the land use ordinance as proposed gives a lot of protections to the county with the buffers and setbacks and sound, the reflection issues, the decommissioning. I believe that, that, that knowing what the end game is, and if you, I would urge you to pass this ordinance because I think then aligning the comp plan, it's going to be much easier because we know what we're working to. I don't see that as a problem. I think that, that, that the state has mandated that we need to do renewables. I think that Lancaster County has a moral responsibility to, to move forward with, with, with embracing clean energy. Again, this is only one bite of the apple. Any project that comes forward is going to come back through, through a rigorous, a rigorous compliance meeting. Public will have a lot of input. There are a lot of safeguards here. I'd like to join the, your, your planning commission. They voted six-zero, ask, you know, recommending you, you approve it, and I'd like to join in on behalf of the Business Advisory Committee to say that, that we joined the planning commission in thinking that this should be advanced and that you should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? If so, please raise your hand. Do you see anyone? Okay. All right, no one else. All right. I've asked Mr. Craig Adair, Adair to also come and speak because some of you who called and asked and made comments and left me voice messages and so on, you, you had some questions and you made some comments, and I, I talked to Mr. Adair about some of those. So I said, "I'd like, maybe he can address some of those things and give you a little bit more clarification on what's what." So, Mr. Adair, I'm going to give you five minutes.
All right, I will, I will try to do it quickly. Thank you, Mr. Shammon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As I think you know, I'm Craig Adair, Senior Development Manager with Open Road Renewables. We're a utility-scale project development shop based in Austin, Texas. We've been working on a project in the northern end of the county here for, for going on three years. So, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide a little bit of additional information on some of the questions and comments that have come up. Probably the most important that I think hasn't really been addressed is the notion that solar panels are not safe. The notion of toxic or hazardous materials in solar panels that could make its way into our soil. Let me say, solar panels are safe. This is a technology that's been around for more than fifty years. It is mostly glass, plastic, and metal. There's a thin layer of semiconductor material encased in shatterproof tempered glass. So by weight, and the two different, there's two different types of solar panels. There's the silicone-based, and then there's the thin film. The, the potentially toxic material in a silicone panel is the lead. Anytime you solder wires together, you have a little bit of lead. So there is a little bit of lead in the solar panels, but it's encased in glass. The amount, it's less than half an ounce in a solar module, which is less than one seven-hundred-and-fiftieth of the amount of lead in a car battery. So because it's encased in glass, it doesn't leach into the soil. They passed the EPA's hazardous waste test called the Toxic Leaching Test, and they are classified as non-hazardous, meaning you could dispose of them in a regular landfill. Of course, that's not the plan. That's not what we recommend. The idea is to recycle them and reuse them whenever possible. The second type of panel is the thin film, and the semiconductor material there is called cadmium telluride. And there's often confusion because cadmium is a pollutant. It comes out of coal plants. Cadmium, when bonded with telluride, is inert, non-volatile, non-soluble in water, and the trace amount of it that is in the panel stays bonded with the glass. They've similarly done tests. They are also classified as non-hazardous and similarly could be disposed of in a regular landfill. The company that makes those, it's an American company based with manufacturing in Ohio, and they have a recycle program, and they recycle over ninety percent of the material from those panels that they take back. So that's number one. Number two, just a, several points have come up about decommissioning. You have, I, I think, one of the best ordinances I've seen in terms of the decommissioning requirements. The life of a solar project is considered to be thirty, thirty-five years. Our leases run out forty years. More than likely after twenty-five years or, or so, the, the facility could be repowered with new panels so to take it out to the forty years. But, you know, God forbid, as somebody said, if we were to go bankrupt, you have a decommissioning bond that is at, you know, held by the county that protects the county for the life of the project, and you, in your ordinance, require that it be updated every five years and adjusted for inflation to ensure that the funds that you have are sufficient to, to cover the decommissioning removal, should that be necessary. There are a number of reasons why that likely wouldn't happen, and we can go into those another time. One of the other points that's come up, and it's a perfectly valid one, is the loss of farmland. As was mentioned, our project is a little bit unique in that or more than seventy percent of it will be on timberland, not on farmland. So it's a small amount of farmland, but it's not correct that at the end of the project life, it's basically like leaving land fallow. So the fertility of the soil is not significantly impacted. In fact, it helps the soil. There's fewer chemicals going into the soil, and it's fallow. And so at the end of that life, it is a long time, of course, so it's temporarily taken out of production. But at the end of those forty years, you don't have to worry about, you know, new apartment buildings or new housing development, which are permanent. So I think you could think of it, in my opinion, as a preservation, a way to preserve farmland that in forty years, when the equipment is removed, the land can be returned to timber or, or farm use.
Excuse me, sir. Let me explain to the audience. I gave everybody five minutes, but he's not talking for or against. He's, he's answering questions, so I'm going to give him additional time. And I think that's beneficial to every last one of us in here to hear what he has to say because he's answering our questions and our concerns. Okay, go ahead, sir.
And, and they're, they're just a handful of things, so, and, and I'll be brief, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. To put a little bit more flesh on, it's been said here, and, and Mr. Flower from Dominion is exactly right. You know, we would not be wise stewards of, of our investors' money if we didn't do our homework on the transmission lines, which is the lifeblood of a solar project. And PJM has data that's available on the lines. Mr. Costello brought up that there are a number of projects that have been applied for, for, for that transmission line. But it is a limited line, and anybody can apply for a position on that line. Those projects will not all get built because there is only two hundred and sixty megawatts of space on that line. The project in Richmond County is a hundred and twenty-seven megawatts. So if that project gets built, that leaves a little bit over a hundred and thirty megawatts left. And so until, unless or until that line is upgraded, there is no more space. So it doesn't matter how many people file applications at PJM to put new projects on that line. There's no space left, and they won't happen. Unless, of course, if, if you decide not to adopt this ordinance and, and our project doesn't happen, well, then that, that capacity would go to another county. So I think those were the main things that I wanted to, to bring up. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that, that you have, Mr. Chairman, or other members of the board.
Well, I'm, okay, if they do, I'm going to call you back up, but let me finish with the public hearing first.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, that takes here everyone that's on the list, unless there's somebody, I'll give you an opportunity to speak that hasn't spoken before. Is there anyone? Okay, if there's not, then I declare the public hearing now closed. All right, gentlemen, before we move on, is there any questions that you have on Mr. Adair, Craig Adair?
Only comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions? All right, yes, sir.
The arguments that are made tonight in support of this ordinance, which would allow utility-scale solar facilities in the A-one and the A-two zones with a special exception, some have been very good, and I understand them. I appreciate them. I also understand the loading issue, that there's a sense of, if not panic, hurring to get our land into the mix, if you will, before the load on the lines is exceeded and done by the counties. I also appreciate the idea of property rights, and I know that there's some of you here that have land in the mix right now as far as potentially being developed by the, for these solar facilities, who've actually said that I ought to be able to do whatever I want with my land. And in a perfect world, I would agree with that. And if you lived in Lancaster County before, I believe it was nineteen seventy-seven, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gill or Mr. Barnes, but before you lived here in nineteen seventy-seven, you could do exactly that. There was no zoning. If you lived here before the year two thousand, there was no comprehensive plan. But we have those. Additionally, we have state and federal laws that deal with, you know, environmental impact on wetlands, tidal waters, and so on and so forth, which we're expected to enforce and which we dedicate resources in the form of a planning and land use office to make sure it's done. So I come then to the concerns that I have, even though I can appreciate some of the, some of the arguments that you're making in, in favor of. And those two areas of concern fall primarily into, number one, the whole role of government in land use. What is being said here is that we're just going to take and kind of talk around the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. At least that's my impression. But we're not going to take the time to go back and see, you know, do these things really guide? And do they really control what it is we want to do? My concern is that they don't. And worse than that, I think if you proceed on something like this, where we just go ahead and say, "Pass it tonight," and move on, then you're bringing into question the whole validity, if you will, of a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. In other words, put it another way, if you, as property owners who want to see this done and want to be able to put these facilities on your land, can say, "I ought to be able to do whatever I want with my land," then why can't anybody else, why can't any other property owner in the county say the same thing with respect to whatever they may want to do? It doesn't work that way, and it hasn't since nineteen seventy-seven with respect to zoning. So I have a real concern. And if we're going to go down that road, then like I say, I have to ask myself, do we really need people to enforce the zoning ordinances? And that sort of thing? That may sound extreme to you, but frankly, that's the way I feel. Another area of concern is stormwater runoff. We've all been through the last month, and for that matter, the last year, when we came here tonight, we saw standing water in open fields. Water will follow its course. I spent a lot of time and have done a lot of work in stormwater management. Maybe not as much as some folks, but I've had, I've gone to schooling for it, and I learned the hard way sometimes that water will go where it wants to go. Now, there were some slides put up here. They showed land, and it had little dips. It, it wasn't flat. I understand that ideally these facilities are going to be put on flat land. Well, if you're talking about a hundred acres or thereabouts in this county, I don't think that that's going to be the case. You're not going to find totally flat land. And so I'm concerned about stormwater runoff. And what makes me concerned about it even more is that our county is somewhat unique, when you think about it. We're surrounded on two sides by the Chesapeake Bay and the Rappanik River. But additionally, and it's, it's not like Richmond County or Northumberland County, we are literally bisected by the Corotoman River, which in turn runs off into two branches, into Western and Eastern Branch. And into each one of those, which in turn goes into the bay, we have a number of creeks and runoff areas. We have wetlands. I'm concerned that we're going to, by putting this level of impervious cover over the land, that we're going to have problems, that we can't even begin to anticipate, but we should at least make an effort to do so in our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance. That plan has primary development areas and secondary development areas. We ought to be looking to expand those. But we ought to do it first before we pass this ordinance. And for those of you that own property and want to return it to farming forty years from now, I'd be concerned as to whether or not you've got any topsoil left, and I'd be concerned whether or not all of it is sitting at the bottom of one of those rivers that I talked about. So given those concerns, even though I appreciate the positive arguments, I cannot, as long as it allows, in the A-one and the A-two, utility-scale solar facilities, and it's doing so without going back and looking at the concrete plan because I believe it has to be, as I think Mr. Costello and other people have put forth, I cannot support this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we need to recognize this petition so that it's in the minutes. There's approximately a hundred and thirty-one names on this petition, and it says petition in support of utility, utility-scale solar energy. So that, that is in the record. So there's a hundred and thirty-one people in this county that's not here today that signed this petition. signed this petition in support of the energy. And each one of the supervisors has a copy of this, and all of them are addressed, they addresses, they live in the county. So I wanna make that clear.
And a number of them live where the proposed application may result.
Yeah. So, so Mr. Barnes stated that we've been working on this from, you know, start of January, somewhere like that, in the twenties, but I'd like to say, we started way before that, because we started with the property down in White Stone. So we've been hashing this, going on two years. And I guess I've heard more of it than anybody on this board, because I'm on the planning commission as a liaison. So I've heard the same comments over and over and over again, and I gotta tell you, our staff has done excellent work. They have gone to all the counties, we have gotten ordinance from, I don't know, I got so many, I'm stacked up in the corner, I get them mixed up from counties and reading them and back and forth and all that. And maybe I'm biased, but I think we got the best one. I think we got the most rigid one that I can see around the state. And I support passing this ordinance tonight, and I would like to say this, there's four items that was outlined, there's four things that need to be done. They can be repeated, I can get Mr. Gill and Mr. Barnes to repeat those things that need to be done before we're gonna accept the application and do all that kind of stuff. There's four of them. If you need them repeated, then we can do it. I know one of them is the revenue sharing and things like that, and so there's four things. Now, the timeline that we think this is gonna take is probably forty-five months. Is that, am I correct on that?
I would say four months, probably.
So what I would suggest to this board is that we pass this ordinance with the effective date of July the first, 2021. So these other things can get filled out, people can go on, do what they need to do, the staff can do what they need to do, get all that stuff ironed out, all the i's dotted and t's crossed, then we can start settling, because it's still gotta come back to us. It's still gotta come back to us for our approval. So that's my suggestion to the board.
And that's included in comprehensive plan?
Well, the comprehensive plan is probably gonna come up in that time, man, I mean, it could, it's possible. Because that's one of the items in there.
Right.
That's chapter six and seven, because they nix on the horizon right there, Mr. Barnes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'm saying that this ordinance passed tonight, the effective date is July the first, 2021, because nothing gonna happen till then anyhow, till we get all this, these, the revenue sharing, the site agreement, all the language scrape that we supposed to have. Am I, I wanna make sure I'm correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So that's my suggestion, and I can make that motion when everybody get finished.
All right. I got one change or amendment I wanna make to it. This is twenty-eight dash five dash seven, where it deals with noise, and if you read it here, it says, "Construction noise shall not exceed eighty-five decibels." I remember one of the people coming in and talking to us and telling us eighty-five decibels, it should be an average of eighty-five decibel, because as you instruction, there may be one or two times you hit something, may go above that. So he's saying an average of eighty-five. So I would like to, instead of saying noise shall not exceed eighty-five decibels, I would like to amend that to say, "Noise shall not exceed an average of eighty-five decibels." Okay?
There's that other item too, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Barnes spoke about on the security, that we strike information.
All right, okay, strike the information, okay.
Yeah, and I wanted to point out, Mr. Pollard mentioned the state code. We do quote that state code for bonding in your ordinance. It's fifteen point two dash twenty-two forty-one point two.
Okay.
I checked out the other day, it's, I think that code section's still right, we'll double check, and so I think you're covered there, if you strike information, I think you opened it up. And to answer the public concern about that, we did have the word bond in there in earlier versions. As we got into this and talking with industry folks, we found that security is a general term that includes bonds, it includes lots of things.
I prefer the word financial security rather than bond.
Okay.
Okay, all right, make that change, all right?
I just have a couple of comments. I know we talked about the adding a line for the water lay overlay district.
Waterfront overlay.
I would like to see that line added, I think you had a note for it.
Say that again.
There was a line that we could add about, where did you suggest that line go?
That was twenty-eight dash five dash one, quote, "May not be permitted in W1," end quote.
And where would we put that exactly?
That would be at the end of the existing sentence of twenty-eight dash five dash one.
May not.
If you look at twenty-eight dash five dash one, at the end of that period, you see the next sentence would say, "May not be permitted in W1."
Otherwise, I'm comfortable with this. I think it does meet the comprehensive plan, and that this use, in my opinion, is a low impact use, and it sort of fits in with the comprehensive plan of preserving the rural character. The purpose of zoning, in my opinion, is to protect landowners from stuff that goes on a particular, on particular other lots next to them. And in this case, there's enough protective barriers and buffers and things on setbacks that allow for that type of protection. I'm comfortable with these setbacks as is, given that in specific cases going forward, if there's a specific objection that can be made, these setbacks can be increased at that point. Each one of these would be handled on a case-by-case basis, and in such stipulations and anything can be applied above and beyond what's already in the ordinance. So I'm in favor of passing it and moving forward with completing the remaining items between now and July.
All right, Mr. Lee with the amendments.
Yeah, Mr., ready for the motion?
Yes.
No, we're not ready for a motion.
Oh, you got something to say? I thought, go ahead, come on, let me cut you out.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Well, probably will come as no surprise to anybody, but I think, as I said earlier, we're putting the cart before the horse. I think it's very clear that we should be looking at the comprehensive plan first, and looking at the details of all of this before we adopt an ordinance. We don't adopt the ordinance, in my opinion, and then go back and try to work out all the incidentals. So I'm sure the vote's gonna reflect my minority position, but I don't like this, I don't like this at all. I don't like giving up the farmland. I don't like cutting down trees and putting this, and there are places that do that. I think there's a place for it, but we have a procedure, and the procedure that anybody else would have to follow if they wanted to change the use of the land, we're just completely throwing that out the window. I'll go throw the comprehensive plan out the window, in my opinion. So, thank you. I agree with Mr. Larson, although he says it in a nicer way than I do.
You're fine.
And he's a kinder man than I am. So I think we could all agree on that.
Any further comments before we make the motion? All right, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the solar facility ordinance two dash twenty-five dash twenty-one be adopted with the emissions, the amendments that's been stated here tonight, and that it be effective July the first, 2021.
Okay, all heard the motion? You favor the?
Would the chair read the amendments to the motion as, amendments to the ordinance as declared in the motion?
All right.
I know that on twenty-eight dash five dash two, I four, you wanna strike information.
Information.
I know that on twenty-eight dash five dash seven, you wanna average eighty-five decibels.
Right.
And on twenty-eight dash five dash one, you say, "May not be permitted in..."
Shall not be permitted.
Shall not be permitted where?
In the W1 overlay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is that, are those the amendments to the ordinance that include the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, the motion's passed with three, four, and two counts.
And my understanding was the motion that the effective date on this ordinance will be July first.
July first, yes. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consensus docket.
You've heard the motion, all in favor of the approval of the consensus docket, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous vote for approval of consensus docket.
And we'll move for approval of the expenditures for the month of February.
Hold on a minute.
They don't wanna stay for the expenditures?
Don't wanna stay to hear the expenditures?
I've just put, that's Jack.
The meeting is still in process, we are just, we're just stopping to tell you all move out, please move out quietly, please move out quietly. Thank you. Thank you.
We're gonna wait for Mr. Larson to get back. Okay.
I move for approval of the expenditures. Total for the month of February, total invoices, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Total payroll, three hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty cents, for a total of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents, of which CARES funds totaled forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. So moved.
All right. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion's passed unanimously. All right. That's it, board reports. Any board reports? Okay.
I will say that there's, Mr. Gill pointed out that there's one person who has asked about the Historic Resources Commission.
Yeah.
And we haven't really ever made a decision. It's not from my district, but we think, I think, that that ought to be anybody that's interested.
If that's the only one that's applied or interested in, yeah, I don't mind, we don't mind. I think we talked about that last time.
We did talk about it, but we didn't.
We basically said yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you need to take any official action with regard to that.
Well, we need to nominate this person.
You need to, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, any of you can nominate anyone.
Good. Well, I don't have his name now, so it's another moot point.
I've got his name, but I don't have his contact information.
Well, I'm actually getting that. He lives in Hills Quarter, and Jimmy is supposed to get that information to me from their homeowners association.
We can take care of that next meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Board, any other board reports? County administrator report?
Just three quick things. The road abandonment from last month, I sent an email out, they're still, VDOT still wants to do some work, and the property owner is preparing a sketch, an engineering firm is preparing a sketch with exact dimensions on how much of that road will be abandoned. So you've got four months from the public hearing to render a decision, so we've got through the May meeting to do that. The Business Relations Advisory Committee joining with two members of this board, which you all decided would be Mr. Bellows and Mr. Lee, will have their first meeting next Wednesday here, also by Zoom at ten a.m., to discuss the items that you talked about last month when you appointed them. And also, we've talked about a potential cigarette tax and potentially joining a regional effort. We've had one additional meeting since last month's board meeting, and just some very general statements from that last Zoom meeting that we had. The PDC would administer the Northern Dak Regional Cigarette Tax Board. They would require a five percent admin fee. It was decided that a regional stamp was preferable to a stamp for each location. The maximum tax that you can assess is two cents per cigarette, which would be forty cents per pack. There's, you know, White Stone has a twenty cent tax, I believe, Kilmarnock has a thirty cent tax. It was discussed of having a uniform regional tax of twenty cents being proposed. We've got another meeting next Wednesday to talk about this some more. You may or may not know that the county administrator for King George has now moved on to another location, so he had initially proposed that King George would cover the cost of the one staff person that would be required by the PDC to implement this regional board and to administer it. And since he is now gone, the, and they have an interim, but no replacement as of yet, and so we need to make sure that that offer still stands. So, but as I said, we've got another meeting next week, and I may learn more at that time.
We would have to adopt, each jurisdiction would have to adopt a tax law ordinance after public hearing.
Yes.
Even though it be uniform.
Yes.
Plan would be that person would be paid technically by Dak County for the first year.
For the first year, and that would give us data on, you know, how much is being collected by each county?
And then it'd be prorated.
And then you could prorate that staff person by that data.
I have a feeling that the expense may be enforcement.
The what?
Enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may be the expensive part of this. I've done that in cities, and you can get into enforcement issues.
Yeah. And you know, that's, it's your decision if you want to go down that road. I mean, I can think of six locations outside of the towns that sell cigarettes, so that's what you'd be looking at, collecting tax from six establishments in the county jurisdiction. So, but more to come on that, but I just wanted to share that.
All right, thank you.
But we also have that other revenue share that's coming in now from those gaming machines that probably no one necessarily knows about, but it's a fair chunk of change.
It is. What was it, fourteen thousand, I think?
Yeah.
What you had asked about before?
They've come to my attention that, I don't know if you've seen, that these gaming machines that have been put into like different gas stations and stuff?
Yeah.
Over the summer, the, last year, the General Assembly had outright banned them, and they were gonna get rid of them, but the governor, in the special session this summer, basically did a line item veto of some kind, and basically gave them an extension, and then put a fee on it, fourteen hundred dollars, I think, per machine or something like that. And a percentage of that goes back to each locality, and so I just learned that we were getting that since like August, and I asked how much it was, and it's been, ended up to about fourteen thousand dollars as of, I think, December or something like that.
That was a couple months.
So over like a few months, it had rallied up quite a bit of money, really. So over a year, you're probably looking at maybe fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue additional coming from those machines now.
Okay, Dr. Westbrook?
I sent out an email, VACO sent a notice about a change in the littering, the fee for littering, and it was supposed to go to the governor's office to be signed. If it is signed, do we have to have a corresponding ordinance so that if we go to court, the judge says? I haven't seen that, Dr. Westbrook, but I would assume so, yes.
Yeah, it was like talking about upping the fees or fines, what have you.
Yes. And I assume that also the ordinance, the state law would take effect July first. Yeah, probably so. I was just.
Say that again, I didn't understand.
It wouldn't take effect till July first, probably. But we could have an ordinance that ties directly to the state law, so whenever that happens, we don't have to keep doing this. Right, right, and you can also tie it to the state law if they raise the rate, so we don't have to do that. That's what I meant, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else? I would...
Make sure we adjourn to that particular date.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Well, I move that we adjourn to Thursday, March the eleventh, at five p.m. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
That's a unanimous vote, we are adjourned, and it's not ten, eleven o'clock.
Yeah. Your schedule is, uh, your schedule is going on.
Your hours is going up and up and up.
But you did have a five-minute meeting early.
Yeah.